And so that for every machine that you have, you have to have four workers.
All right, and well, this is what I have from Joe. Pole worker per box former is what it says up here. And it's graduated from two oh, two fifty-one to five hundred, you have to have five. From five oh one to seven fifty, you have to have six. And it goes on down, on down to from thirty-five oh one to four thousand, you have to have seventeen. And this is the list of the polling places that we've got in the city. And the number of people assigned to each polling place. For example, uh, the V F W has nineteen hundred and seventy-one voters assigned to that box. Will Valley has twenty-three hundred and three assigned to that box. And in the city for a total, there's eighty-one hundred and seventy-two. So, you know, I don't understand how that's gonna reduce the number of pole workers by reducing the number of polling places since that's fell out here, what we gotta have.
You got a, you got a citation on that?
No, I don't. But your number of goals, Stifel.
I'll get you. You've got three different laws, right? Depending on what kind of equipment you're doing, whether you're doing paper ballots.
A lot of my tabulations, what they told us always, you had to have four people per machine.
Per machine.
How many people, how many people you run through a machine? I thought I heard six hundred, maybe or something. What did he say six hundred was?
They like you have a.
I can't even remember exactly.
Well, according to this, from, from two fifty or less, you gotta have four fifty and two fifty-one to five hundred, you gotta have five. It's according to what I have here, it's the number of people assigned to that box determine.
Registered voters to that box.
That's assigned to that box.
And that's not who comes and votes, but it's the registered voters.
Yes, yes. No, you don't have a.
I mean, you don't have a.
You have a bill.
So I don't see how reducing the number of polling places is gonna reduce the number of workers.
Right.
Here, when electronic vote counting machines, that's what we use, electronic vote counting machine. One precinct counter or ballot box, as they call it. For each twenty-four hundred expected voters are fractioned thereof. So in essence, Ray, if we had one location, we could probably have one box.
Well, I.
What's, what's voted into files is what you're saying.
Well, you're, you're looking at, there's several different rules and you're looking at the wrong rule.
Yeah.
We looking at wrong, we, look, we use electronic boxes. For every machine you have, you have to have four.
Okay.
Rule three oh seven dash X dash one dash point one zero states that there must be at least one inspector and three clerks for each machine.
Somebody didn't tell Joe Staple that she's wrong.
Joe might not be wrong, Ray.
He might be wrong on a county or state election. This is the, this is what's so different about, this is the city election. What we voted on Tuesday was for an election every four years for the city of Fort Plank. Has nothing to do with the senate runoff and all that stuff. And that was done Tuesday based on information we got last Friday to look at over the weekend. We discussed it, we voted on it, we had opportunities to not vote on it, we didn't, everybody voted on unanimously. I've been getting crap all week because I'm the stumbling block and won't let us change it back. We can't legally change it back if we wanted to, it's the other thing. I mean, so.
Because it's too late, right?
It's gotta be published in the paper to be an effective ordinance within so many days and Monday's the deadline. I said the other day, if we're gonna do this, we either do it or not by the twenty-fifth. I brought that up in the meeting.
You did say that.
Yeah.
So it was done and I've got one phone call and after I talked to the lady for a few minutes, she was fine with it. I got one this morning, after I talked to him for a minute, he said, I'm voting for you, I just think you're gonna get in some trouble on the mountain 'cause they're telling everybody that you're the stumbling block and won't let them change it back. I said, we can't change it back. Well, okay, then they need to tell somebody that. It's done, it was done for safety.
That's what we're gonna say, let's talk about the end.
It's gonna cost us more money to do this way safely.
Don't think I'm gonna ask, what'd you tell me about six hundred votes?
There, in Alabama, years ago, I misspoke on that. You have paper ballots, you've got voting machines, or you've got electronic devices. The six hundred applies to paper ballots. You know, in my mind, well, we got a paper ballot, but we use electronic machines. So that's the rule we follow, is the electronic device.
So if I'm correct, I understand that it's gonna be divided. You told me after the meeting that Joe City's gonna be divided about thirty-five hundred registered voters at each polling.
Forty, forty-four hundred at V F W and thirty-seven oh seven at Will's Valley.
Well, even if you, say you expect everybody to show up, that means you've got to have four machines.
Exactly.
Four.
Yeah, which that's what we're gonna have anyway, two.
But actually, you probably could get by with a machine at both places because we've only had twenty-six hundred vote.
But in order, in order to facilitate the safety and well-being of the voters, to be able to spread out, we'll have two machines.
And this is not a forever deal. This was done for the upcoming election. We can change that back and rescind that ordinance after this election. This was done for safety reasons in my mind. If it was done for any other reason, I don't know why. But I think we all went into this trying to make this as safe and efficient an election as possible 'cause we're afraid people weren't gonna vote. And we're still encouraging people to vote absentee even now. The recommendation from the clerk was one voting place. We decided for two. The two biggest places we could put people. And we went from Will's Valley Rec Center, not the rooms where they vote now. We're talking about the double gym. We're talking about a box in every corner, a hundred and fifty feet apart. In the metal buildings of the V F W, not the post home, in different corners where they're a hundred feet apart. We talked yesterday among ourselves some about how to make it easier for people. And we even talked about getting golf carts to let people, uh, be taken to the door in rear-facing seats where somebody comes together, they, you ride up there, they get off, walk in, you sanitize it down, then you take somebody else down to their car. I would love to do anything we gotta do to make it as safe an experience as possible. We buy five thousand eight pens for four hundred dollars. And you get a pen, you sign in, you carry your pen with you, you put the box and get done. Cost in town, eh, this was all about safety. It's always been about safety. It's not disenfranchising voters. I have no reason whatsoever to keep somebody on the mountain from voting. If it goes back to that, fine, that'll be a decision made after this election. But this is done and we gotta make the most of it. We got ninety days to make it as safe and efficient as we can. And if we can't that, we don't need to be here if we can't do that in ninety days. But I'm tired of getting in line for the stumbling block of keeping people at Fisher from being able to vote. I'd love for that to happen, but it's done. It was done unanimously.
Are we gonna have, uh, hands sanitized and all that for everybody to go?
Ronnie and I were working on that, we're gonna, we're gonna have the safe, the plain, the possibly.
This whole folder is for safety stuff. Sprays that take place, a lice saw, wiping stuff down, the whole nine yards.
Kind of one of the main questions that I've got right now is whether we're gonna have to require everybody to vote to wear a mask. We won't know that, right? We don't have to requiring it for anything else.
Well, I wouldn't care if we had them there regardless.
Right.
Or somebody to pick up and use if they need it.
I, I think you're exactly right, they need to be available.
We need to make that available too now.
The little disposable kind.
Well, that means.
Take it, we already got it. Well, I've got that in here too. You know, we've ordered six hundred there and we can order some more if we need to. But depending on what style you get, they're, they can be from anywhere from three dollars to.
I think that's the cheapest kind right there.
Right.
Yeah, I can get those for less than a dollar a piece.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, this election's gonna cost us more money. This was never to me about saving money. This was to make it where people would come and vote because people are scared right now.
Want them to feel safe.
Exactly.
If you're gonna try to mark off six for that.
If I might inject, I've been involved in the last five, I think, city elections. I know four for sure. And we've always wanted to strike by those rules, Lieutenant. It wouldn't, what this and said or that and said, it'd be by those rules. And we've never, we've never added anything and we've never taken anything away because if you don't go them rules, the Fed's coming here and getting me and him both. And I don't, I ain't going to jail for nobody.
Is it okay to use city workers to help these people? Like if we get golf carts for them or sanitize.
Have city workers at the place to sanitize.
Whatever we need to do to keep them safe.
Campaigning for somebody and talking smack about the election, they can work all day long, they're on the payroll anyway.
And that's, I want, and now, and now that you mention that, way, I wanna bring, I wanna address that because I'm sure the same person called each and one of, every one of you saying, she wouldn't have any problem getting poll workers. City election is nonpartisan. And the person that y'all are talking about is the most partisan person that I can think of.
You got that, right?
When we had the fiasco at the senior building last year, I own that, I took responsibility for it. People I had running it had been affiliated with voting process for twenty years. I thought some of it would have rubbed off on them, it didn't. I accept that. Well, I got blasted because we didn't have enough Republicans over there. And I will not tolerate any kind of partisanship in municipal elections.
Well, there shouldn't be, no.
Yeah.
That's always been good, one thing about the.
Well, and, and somebody that had called me yesterday and we, we talked and, uh, I let them know that this was not done to be permanently, that it was done for this, for this election. And if I have to be the one to lead that charge to get it put back, then I will do that because I feel like that it needs to be, uh, because that's, that's what the, you know, that's what I'm hearing from the people in the community.
Well, let's don't get.
Yeah, let's don't get there.
Race owned.
Yeah.
We're fifteen people called, that means twelve thousand nine hundred eighty-five didn't.
Right.
And there's not one of them that called and complained.
Well.
Well, I've had maybe three.
That are perfectly willing to drive down the mountain.
And two are the same people to everybody. But, um.
I have to drive down the mountain. I live on the mountain and I'm in the senior center. I have to drive down for every.
But that's the city, I've done that the other day. Half the people on the mountain have to vote in the valley anyway. Everybody from here down goes to the senior center. And if you're on the left side of the parkway, you go to rec center now. You're talking about the Fisher folks and over around Dean Road in the middle of the mountain there, they can still vote at the fire hall or Fisher. And that's, that's the people that we're disenfranchising and I understand that. But I've talked to four people out there in the last few days that called me and said, hey, I don't have a problem with it. I'm in town and I have to go out there to vote. It would be more convenient for me to vote down here because by the time I get out there, the rush is on. So it, it's tit for tat. But I, I was, I'm tired of people blaming us for trying to disenfranchise us or taking away their right to vote. This is once every four years and it's one election. Right now, this is for the next election and then it can change after that if need be. But it wasn't done for any other reason in my mind and heart than to try to make people feel safe and come and vote.
Well, and we need to market that, I think, and get, you know, get it out to all the media.
We're gonna stress to the hilt absentee.
Yes.
Therefore, nobody is disenfranchised.
Well, I think there are some people that think that all the elections are now, the county elections and everything's gonna be that way. And that's not the case.
No, we don't control those polling places. This is just the city election.
And when, when Joe Staple mails out the card that informs people where they will now vote, it will, in big bold letters, this is for the municipal election only. Possible two elections.
Have y'all had any, anybody called from senior center box?
I, I haven't.
Of what?
Senior center box, concerned about it having to go up there too. I've had, well, I think I've had too, but, uh.
Why are they concerned?
Because it's changed.
Yeah.
It's different, and I understand that. I got moved from the senior center to Will's Valley years ago because I moved from one side of town to the other. It's what you do. If you wanna go vote and care enough to go vote, you'll go where you need to go. But I don't wanna inconvenience anybody and I know it's a long ways from Fisher to come down to the rec center. But guess what? If you live over where Eddie Freeman lives, you're coming down here anyway. If you live over where Dave Fisher lives, you can go over there and scuttle and vote.
Yeah.
So it's already upset some folks out there years ago and we didn't do that, the county did.
I thought, I thought, I thought that, uh, they changed that to where they could vote at Fisher.
No, no.
Well, let's talk about.
They didn't ask us to move and do that, eh?
East Island, one district, one, East Island, district.
As it's in voting.
What?
We're not just gonna move around that.
It's a process by which.
Well, we're talking about that.
But out of Fisher, tried to, didn't happen. On the left side of the parkway.
On the left side of district one.
You gotta go to, uh, Will's Valley. Yeah, like Amelia's sitting there looking at Fire Hall, but she hasn't voted. Will's Valley and have been for years for only decision, we had nothing.
Well, I don't know, but it's on here, uh, the, uh, East Island District three and, uh, East Island District one votes at the fire hall up top of the mountain, fire hall number three.
Y'all involved in that there.
That's for, that's for city elections, those, what you're looking at.
The city? Yeah.
That's just the city.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, but for county elections, they're split. That's what, why you say, if you live on one side of the road, you go, you go one place, you live, live across the street, you go somewhere else.
But we're, this is city, I'm talking about.
So that's what I'm saying now, do they not all vote at Fisher?
They'll vote at Fisher, they'll vote at Fire.
That's what I'm saying. You got, you got different box.
Yeah, we're talking about different things.
Different precincts.
I think, I think people are worried if you throw more people in, it's gonna be, you know, that's, that's the biggest concern.
Spread out.
You know, if you bring two thousand voters from down here and carry it to the rec center, you got that many more people coming.
Well, that's the problem, you're talking about four hundred instead of two thousand.
Yeah.
When you're talking about real numbers. But the fact of the matter is, if you go out there to the fire station and look, you got a sixteen hundred square foot engine around that they're sitting there in, one door in, one more, that, that's three foot wide. And you're literally standing there sweating on somebody, filling out your paperwork. There's no six-foot rail there and Fisher's gonna be the same way. It's a little bigger box. But if you're out of Fisher by the time you get people in there and you're, you're gonna have people standing in line outside in the August heat or going home and not voting or you sit in your car and we'll call you when it's time to vote. I don't wanna get to that.
If people go out and vote, if they don't put absentee, so I think you'll have that period.
Well, and I, actually, the rule is now fifty percent capacity anywhere.
Mm-hmm, yeah. In, in large meetings, it's still fifty percent. So, you know, you take fifty percent capacity of the Will's Valley Double Gym Rec Center, you can still put a thousand people in there.
Right, but I'm talking about someplace like Fisher or.
The fire hall, right.
Yeah, the fire hall, you can't maintain that.
Just small places.
And the senior center is small place.
Yeah, it's not really that big.
And the boat, the places we've chosen, it should be easy to get people in one door and out the other.
That's the whole design of this process. We just haven't dictated to ourselves how we're gonna do it. We got this started and didn't put a plan out there and people think we're just gonna shove everybody in one three-foot door and pile them into a building. And they're gonna be standing on top of it. This is actually going into the biggest building we got and spreading them out. And you can go in that rec center and go down one hallway and come out another and you'll never be within ten feet of somebody if you wanna write it off that way. I mean, this is the safest possible way we can do it. And that's all I wanna do. This is not for inconvenience.
And I can assure y'all, by election time, Ronnie and I will have it down to where it won't be an issue.
It'll be a.
Well, if anybody needs a com, needs accommodations, I wish that's what they would tell us.
Right.
Uh, things we can do to make it easier or better for them.
Yeah.
In the situation we're in and.
You can put high-top tables in there to vote on so nobody has to sit in a chair that has to be disinfected every time. There's all kinds of little things you can do.
Could we, uh, talk about the absentee process?
Sure.
What is it?
Go ahead.
Well, we wanna push that as much as we can.
If someone wants to vote absentee, you, you can go to the Secretary of State website right now, download a request for an application.
For a city election?
For an election, for an absentee.
We use the sun thing.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not the ballot, it's the, it's the request.
Request for the ballot.
An application.
Yeah, an application. And then, once they do that, they can mail it in. Of course, there'll be nothing to mail out until after qualifying this 'cause you won't know whose name's gonna appear on the ballot. At that point in time, there's, there's, as Ronnie can attest to, there's how many? Six or eight envelopes that go in the absentee packet. You mail to the individual. There are eight stated reasons that you can vote absentee. And it's like I alluded to in the council meeting, I fully expect John Merrill, the Secretary of State, will add COVID-nineteen to that list, make it nine. But be that as it may, I'm not gonna require if somebody wants to vote absentee, give it to them. The only thing they have to provide is ID, just like they always have. Nothing's gonna change in that regard.
Do they come here today then?
They can, they can be mailed, they can be mailed.
But can they show up here and vote absentee?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how most people do it.
Yeah, we had the girl sitting out front last election and, and during this whole process, they were sending out applications, sending out stuff that you could actually come in here and vote absentee in the front lobby.
Yeah, I miss even, I leave out even.
And it gets put in there sealed up and it goes in the box till the night of the election when it's open for the very first time.
Four poll workers that do absentee, they sit right here at this table.
All right, now, how, how many, uh, tell me, how many is it gonna reduce the number of poll workers way up?
We had, we had, s, how many machines did I tell you?
What did we have the last time?
We had, we had thirty, we had thirty something workers last time.
Yes.
Cause we had three machines at the senior center, we had.
Yeah, nine total.
Nine was, yeah.
That's thirty-six.
Thirty, thirty-six poll workers.
We had four workers, maybe thirty-six, yeah.
So now we're gonna, we'll have sixteen.
And so you don't think you can find thirty-six poll workers?
Oh, maybe thirty-six.
So you said in three boxes?
But that's what we had before, you said.
Well, we had nine boxes, nine.
I understand. You face, you face, we're in trouble finding poll workers.
What would I always do, Ray?
That was discussed, but that wasn't, I didn't care about that. Every election, my concern was that the ones we did get were usually senior citizens.
Right.
And most of our voters are seniors.
Right.
I, I don't care what nobody says, whether it's Celeste or whoever. Whoever says that poll workers are aplenty, they ain't tried to get them before for saying that because I know in two elections specifically, I was responsible for getting all the poll workers and it took me months. I started about three months early.
We're not talking about Democrat or Republican.
What did we find out?
We're talking about non-Republican city elections.
Seven? A hundred, I think it's a hundred.
I think they get a hundred dollars cause they went to twelve.
And the inspector gets a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, probably eight.
Poll roll in twelve hours and then it usually takes them an hour or two. So they, that, it's a fourteen-hour day.
Say a hundred and hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty, I bet, go back.
It would fail a bit more.
But I did misspeak about something the council made, Ray. I said it costs between seventeen and twenty thousand dollars, we think thirty thousand dollars.
On the last.
On the last city election.
Well, again, I, I mean, money is important.
Yeah, that, that, no, it's.
As far as this, it, I'm like, wait, it's about safety.
Well, if, if we save ten thousand dollars on poll workers and put it back into equipment, safety stuff to have elections, it's a net of zero, but it's a safer process.
Or even pay the poll workers.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's, that's where my whole.
I would rather probably pay them more.
No.
It's like hazard pay.
Yeah.
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 I'm fine with that and the, nothing's forever. This is for the August twenty-fifth election.
And runoff.
Every runoff if necessary, which hopefully won't be because the rules change a little bit, but, uh.
Can we make sure the absentee, we set it up at the end of the lobbies so people can distance?
It's always been at the end of the lobbies down here.
Okay, okay.
Well, the court system, which we're planning on opening up on the eighth, is going to require that they, everybody sanitized, that you check their temperature, that, uh, everybody that enters has a mask. I mean, this is came from the powers that be, you know, don't give us a choice, we gotta do that. And I finally located one of those electronic monitors and it's in now, so that'll, that'll work good up there. We don't know what kinda regulations are gonna be put on the election.
Yeah.
I mean, that could be part of that.
And it probably will be.
Yeah.
Well, I went in last, yesterday to the doctor's office and they got some sort of temperature thing now, they don't even touch you.
No, no.
It's like a little, a little infrared.
Yeah.
They, you can need one, a couple of those.
They do that at courthouse.
Probably will.
We, we got over three, we can go.
On Bay County elections.
That's right.
You can let him.
I'm worried about.
Well, I mean, they put out.
They must get that.
I know, when, when is that? July, take the July. I do, I put it in there with the.
What's the date, Tom?
They take July.
Before the July election.
July, what was your question?
Fourteenth. Fourteenth of July.
Fourteenth, yeah.
That's on the city, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that is gonna be a little confusing.
As far as I know, all the boxes and everything.
Yeah, and that's something that needs to be emphasized is, and I, y'all talked about it, is the only change is to one, just the city election. I'm saying this for the newspaper down there. Now, it's the city election only, we're not, it won't change any other election.
And people just don't understand, they're not informed and.
They don't like change.
They don't like change, so.
I've been doing it all my life, my daddy done that and I agree, I honestly that too.
I mean, I'm just so sorry for those that feel that way, but we're just.
From my point of view, the county ought to do something too. I mean, the county's gonna hold evidently the way it is right now, just everything as is. So they're gonna have the problems that we've been talking about, the reasons we're trying to go away from. But nine holidays the county has not yet, did you talk to Ronnie?
I talked to Craig yesterday, Craig Sheldon, and he said, I've been trying to get him to do exactly what y'all are doing.
Well, we got, we can't, we can't control that. We possibly would have two elections, you know, if we have a runoff.
I think the biggest concern people's thinking is you put more people in one spot and that's.
Not gonna be able to spread out and then.
Yeah.
And that's totally backwards of what's actually being done. We're actually going to the biggest place we go.
If you remember, T J, when I was explaining what I had on that sheet of paper and everything, I said, are you gonna allow just so many in the poll? Are you gonna do this, you gonna do that? I had all that on that paper and everything, but I don't know where it went.
Well, bottom line is it's done, they can undo it.
It's done, yeah.
And it ain't my fault, we can't undo it, it's done.
It can be changed.
It can be changed later, but we gotta make the most of it and make it a safe, efficient process. That's the whole reason behind this, was make it safely and efficiently voting process.
Do this one, y'all, have four years to look at how this will work, how it didn't, what changes need to be made to it. You may put one back out on the mountain and consolidate some down in the sand and there's just all sorts of things you can do. And it's not about money, it's about safety.
Exactly.
And yes.
It's harder and harder to find places to have them anyway, that's why out in five fours.
Yeah, tore down, literally tore it down.
Yeah, tore it down, yeah.
It's broke, man.
You know, about years ago, they loaded in churches and stuff, I mean, can't do that.
More, yeah.
You know, you gotta, you gotta keep the separation there, the gasco. I remember.
We laughed at it.
Lock heaven store, we're, sadly smoking, used to be a polling place.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
In Chad Robinson. The salad club over there, Ford, I mean, it was.
Where I was, isn't that gross?
The lobby of the police station down there, the lobby of, uh, the courthouse, the school here. We had that new school, it was everywhere you looked was a polling place.
There was eighteen that we got from where we are now.
Community building.
Was a, was a reduction from eighteen.
Yeah.
There was eighteen, you couldn't walk without stung, stung over a public.
Will Valley, not Will Valley, but the old rec center and the National Guard Army were public works, and they were four block space, one way or the other.
Well, I think about even at the rec center now, that's where I vote. And when you go in, their capacity's already met by everybody that's in there.
By the workers.
Yeah.
Yeah, in, in those little rooms. Yeah, in, in those little rooms.
Yeah.
By going into the gym, we're gonna gain so much more space if you will literally have to haul across the building to talk from one place to the other. And you go in one door and come out the other. My thinking is, we can line it up and figure it out, but if you take that little gym there, if you put your machines right there. You go in, do your thing, and then you slide your ballot in, put your pin in the box, and you walk out that side door and out the front door. The closest you ever come to anybody is going in and out the front door. And you put them where it's the far outside doors. There's so many options there that you have nowhere else.
You could go back.
Exactly.
And if you have to walk further, we'll have transportation.
Transports and no, that's not gonna contaminate more people. I got that little argument this morning. Oh, you're just gonna put people in six feet each other if you do that? Well, if they came together, my lord, let them ride the golf cart together. This is common sense. This ain't Democrat and Republican. This is common sense and safety.
Well, I think the biggest thing is the, is the safety.
That's it.
You know, the safety of, of being able to, uh, you know, and some people's gonna disagree with that, but that, I mean. Uh, you just gotta do.
You gotta do more space for the city.
Right, and, and, um, you know.
Well, that's our intent.
That, yeah, that's definitely the intent of, you know, this whole thing was.
Not to change or make anybody mad or.
Right.
It's done. Like I said, it can be changed, so.
Do we have anything else?
I wore my pink shirt.
I just, I just encourage folks to, to get out and vote.
That's my whole desire all along.
Right, we, we have how many registered voters or any?
Eighty-four hundred.
Eighty-four hundred registered voters and we had twenty-six hundred or twenty-two hundred.
According to what I got right here, eighty-one hundred and seventy-two.
Well, there's that, that many dropped off then.
Do what?
There's that many dropped off.
What I've got is eighty-one hundred and seventy.
Last, last four years.
We had, we had over three thousand, over two or three elections.
Yeah.
So it's what you really talking about is three thousand. You'll have about fifteen hundred at each place. So it all.
And that'd be a heavy turnout this time, right?
What?
That'll be a heavy turnout if there's three.
I'd be surprised if that many turned out and caused a virus.
And that'll cause the virus and then, you know, well, it depends on lots of things. But it appears you're not gonna have a mayor's race at this point, and so that's, that also turns up town.
Well, and just so you know, there is a, there is an app for your phone that's Vote for Alabama and it's run by the Secretary of State. And you can actually go in there and register to vote or request your absentee. So, easy peasy.
Is that all vote for the city election?
Mm-hmm, should be.
The ballot or can you come in and hear? Fill out your application and just turn it in in person and then vote.
Yeah, a lot of people do that.
I mean, I'd be glad to help pi- walk people through that.
Do you, do you, you gotta show your ID when you. Not when you request a ballot, but when you vote.
I voted absentee.
When you vote, when you vote, no matter how you vote, you get to show your ID.
Right.
That's another cross contamination point right there. We all know, you go in there, you pick up that pin, you sign the thing. Put the pin down, the next one behind you picks it up, and then you hand them your driver's license, they look at it, hand it back, and then you hand it to somebody else and hand it back. So those kinda things are gonna happen.
Exactly, and, and my recommendation would be there not be any pins for the public on the table. You hand them a pin when you come in the door and you tell them, you have to have this pin to sign in.
Right.
You have to have this pin to vote. If you don't wanna ke- keep this pin when you leave, put it in that garbage can up there.
It's about five thousand for three hundred and eighty dollars.
If you use more than five thousand, I'll buy.
The pants, you gonna get a new one.
Yeah.
Or bring your own.
Maybe I'll donate them for three hundred dollars.
Now, when you're in the election, why don't you get your, put your.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, you know, big sticks.
Big sticks.
Yeah, you're right. Nineteen, used to be nineteen since.
When they came out with the CDC stuff yesterday, now they're saying it's basically not effective doing all this wiping down stairline stuff. Cause the number one cross contamination is person to person.
Yeah.
So the, the biggest thing is probably gonna be for the rest of our lives is social distancing and here to stay.
Well.
Things have changed every single day since then, because, you know, you get this and, and, you know.
We don't know where we'll be in August.
Right.
Well, the problem is, you know, if you remember, although it's a wholly different kind of virus. How long it took the medical community to figure out how AIDS was transmitted, what would, what wouldn't, what you could do. And you know, we talked about a virus, we're forty years down the road with AIDS and they still don't have a virus. They can treat it, but there is no, I mean, not virus vaccination, and they still don't have vaccination. We might not ever have vaccination of this.
Well, I hope they don't rush it though, hopefully study.
I'm not taking a study. People are lining up to be the gift. I wish so much.
You gotta get vaccinated.
Well, they've got a herb, they've got a herb for it in Africa now. For the crop.
They what now?
Herb. In Africa, they're, the president or whoever they call him in Africa and everything, he did four glasses and drunk it this morning.
Well, you know, sometimes natural remedies actually work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Try you pucks out and then spray it.
It's not that bad part of the sky.
A hormone lake or ditch.
Oh, I see.
All right, anybody got anything else?
Ray, it's your turn.
By now?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, I, you know, I just, I. We're cutting it to two. Are there any possible way we could, that they add at least one more? Not now, one. I'd love to have it be by the twenty-fifth.
It, that was passed by ordinance and it had to be changed by ordinance.
What's we not changing by order?
It's not effective till it's published. The paper don't publish again the month, uh, Wednesday. Comes out tomorrow, but they've already gone to print.
Okay.
We've made a decision, which makes state with Mike Muff. For the right reasons.
I would, I, for personal reasons, like, I would not for the phone calls I've got. I'd just like to see one on the mountain, at least one.
That's it.
I, I think we made a mistake by not having one on the mountain.
I agree. I think the best thing we do right now is encourage absentee.
But we can't, we can't. Cause you got to be in, there's got to be a kind of journal that couldn't be in any other paper.
It's gotta be published in the, if there is a paper published in the town by which the presiding body resides, it has to be published in that paper.
So, no, it couldn't be in any other paper. Yeah.
That's how small it's.
That's a bigger thing.
Well, I don't know how, I can't figure out how you figure out ca- how to call anybody anymore. Cause you gotta call somebody that has their number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Share their contact. That people call me all the time. I feel like somebody's four one one.
Is that what, is this what's been ordered?
That's what, we've got some of, that's what I was telling you about the other day, the protective barrier phone, like the Secret Service and President and other folks are using. Where you can't wear a mask and work. We can get some of that, some more of that, but that's just y'all read over and look at. Before we decide how much of that, or if we wanna go that route with some of the departments. This is a, take this as both of us same things. Lysol now, we can buy this. These are things that we're starting to find, that are coming on the market now.
Do you know what, what?
There's different things out there now. We're just gonna have to look at all that.
My bother thing about that is even though you got it on your face and your hands there, what keeps you from breathing?
Well, you can actually put it in your nasal passages if you need to. It, it's a foam that dries out. You, you can wipe it on your nose because if, if you'll look at the data right now. Wearing a mask makes you more prone to touch your face over twenty times a minute than not wearing a mask. So you're actually, even Dr. Fauci on his sixty minutes the other day, said wearing a mask to keep from getting it. It's not really effective. The mask are primarily effective for people who are. Coughing it out and it keeps it on them.
Right.
So, you know, that, making everybody wear a mask is some peace of mind, but it's actually a false sense of security too. But if you wanna wear it fine, if you don't fine, but.
I got one in my pocket, but I wanna put it on and kickstart where I'm going.
You, you're talking about buying them masks, uh, who was it donated these masks?
Renfro.
Renfro.
Well, who might could, of course, you're not gonna get. Eighty-eight cents a piece.
Yeah, like you need them.
Plus can't breathe them though.
Well, if we're providing masks just for a short amount of time, it seems like what?
The, the disposable.
Yeah.
Would be fun. And if somebody feels like they need something else, I, I mean, they should let us know what. People are thinking we're not accommodating to them. They need to let us know.
Well, the people that are really interested will have their mask on when they come anyway, and the others will just have to give them one and they'll throw money in.
They're like actual K and ninety-five, they're three dollar and a half a piece.
You have a mask.
That's one that you can get. That's the one that we're looking at a couple of, well, over a month ago when all this started.
And how about?
They're like three dollar and a half a piece.
And ninety-five?
Yeah.
And that's the same ones at the, the hospital.
If you put one of them on, you won't wanna put it back on again because you cannot breathe in it.
Well, some people can't, some do.
I got one I wear on the move. I didn't realize it, it was a good one.
I mean, I would like wearing any mask, but if it's gonna keep me safe for a little while, I, it's an inconvenience, but. Like, they say it might bear a new normal.